We are now live.
All right, it is five o'clock. We are calling this special study session, school board meeting, February 2nd, 2022. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm mute your mic if you choose to do so. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
The United.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice. For all.
Thank you all. We are following along the agenda. Call the meeting to order. Public comment on agenda items only. At this time, do we have members of the public wishing to speak on agenda items only?
If there are members of the public who'd like to comment on our agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. President Sheffield, is this the only time for public comment during this meeting?
This is the only time. I do not see it on the agenda elsewhere.
Okay, so any members of the public who would like to comment at all, please raise your hand now. And it looks like we do not have any hands raised.
All right, thank you. We are going to move on to Agenda Item B, the study session. Agenda Item B1, Santa Rosa French American Charter School Charter Document Revision. The Board of Education will receive information on proposed revision to the Santa Rosa French American Charter School Charter document. Presenting to us, for us this evening, we have Superintendent Trunell, Deputy Superintendent Edson, Associate Superintendent Armstrong, and Assistant Superintendent Shepherd. And staff, I believe. All right, well, I am turning this over to the presentation to you Superintendent Trunell.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity this evening. Good evening, Board, our panelists, guests, members of the public, staff, and students, if we have any tonight. I would just like to recognize who our additional panelists are this evening. We have John Yay, who is an attorney that we work with in regard to charter law. We have Principal Evelyn Anderson from Santa Rosa French American Charter. We have Mitch Tucker, who is the principal of Slater Middle School, and Dr. Adam Paulson, who is the principal of Montgomery High School. Kelly Dillon, who is one of our executive directors in educational services. And did I miss an extra person? I'm just checking boxes. Okay. All right, so welcome as panelists for this evening's meeting. There are resources that have been added today as supporting documents that we are walking in to the meeting today. So to bring to your attention under supporting documents, the board study session, which is the PowerPoint that I will be sharing my screen with in a moment, and also a seven-page document with additional information about the potential of the Santa Rosa French American Middle School. For your review as I go through the presentation. There are several people that we may be relying on during the presentation tonight. I will be going through the presentation myself. And then at the end of the presentation, unless the board has a question midway through or at any point during the presentation, we will, we do have some questions for consideration with the board at the end of the presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And make sure. Zoom out of the way. Okay, can you all see the PowerPoint? Perfect, I'm going to put it in slideshow mode. All right, so for tonight, the information at hand that we would like to review with the board is the history of the French American Charter School, specifically related to the seventh and eighth grade piece, the interest to reinstate the seventh and eighth grades back into the charter, a proposed program overview, which includes the program enrollment, current demographics and enrollment for both French American Charter as well as Slater Middle School, the proposed location of the seventh and eighth grades, and the courses of study. We'll be reviewing staffing and organizational management projection, as well as a fiscal outlook for resources and stability. And then the pathway to high school potentially. As I mentioned, we have questions for consideration that we would want to sort of dig into with the board, and then an opportunity for additional questions on the part of the board with staff. So just a little review and background of the history of French American Charter, seventh and eighth grade. So when the charter opened in 2012, 2013, the charter was set to serve Kinder Academy through eighth-grade students. And the great configuration of the charter was the Kinder Academy through eighth grade through June 30th of 2020. By 2014, 2015, there was a higher demand for French American to grow additional classes to include a fourth kindergarten class. And so with that, and given the space that the charter school had, it started to sort of push in on the space that would have been available for seventh and eighth grades. You can see that in 2015, 2016, they had an enrollment of 495 with 119 kindergarten students and 94 first graders. There wasn't enough classrooms. And so again, this further pushed the ability or inability to offer seventh and eighth grade at the campus. And it was determined that there was, also at that time, and we probably have members on this panel who could speak to that more directly, but from what I understand, the space availability and the facility didn't allow for the growth of additional buildings onto the campus due to the earthquake fault line. And we could talk a little bit more about that if we need to. So in response to the interest for the middle school program, there, in response to interest for the middle school program, the Rincon Valley Union School District added advanced French into their charter middle school program. So since then, since, since 2016, there's been a funneling of our outgoing sixth graders matriculating into the Rincon Valley Charter program. And then the majority of those students returned to us in high school after that. At the time of the charter renewal in 2020, it was advised that because we were no longer serving seventh and eighth grade students within the charter program, that that be removed from the charter. So there has been growing interest, especially.
Superintendent Trunell, I don't know if it's just me, and it definitely might be, but I see, actually, I think I just figured it out. Never mind. I'm not seeing the PowerPoint, but I think you figured it out. My bad. If no one else has a problem, ignore me.
Okay, just let me know. So over the last several months, it's become clear that there's been an interest to reinstate the seventh and eighth grades back into the French program. The site and Principal Anderson worked with families and students and staff to survey that interest. And at the time of surveying, there were about 23, 22, 23 students who were strongly interested in attending the French program in the event that seventh and eighth grade was returned to the charter. You can also see that people were also indicating that for a variety of reasons, family needs, other siblings, et cetera, they decided that they would continue to take their children to the Rincon Valley Middle Program, which is called Spring Lake. So what are we proposing? What is the site proposing that we are bringing forward to you this evening for just a discussion and a chance to have, give the board time to look at all of the angles of the potential of this reinstatement? So the proposal would be that for the 22, 23 school year, the seventh grade, the seventh grade program would begin. We would not start off with both seventh and eighth. It would be a roll up over two years, starting with seventh grade in the 22, 23 school year and the eighth grade in the 23, 24 school year. The thinking is that we would house the program at the satellites, a satellite of the program at Slater Middle School. However, the students that are in the seventh and eighth grade program would be considered Santa Rosa French American Charter School students housed on the Slater campus. Students would take three courses in French and three courses in English, and I will get into the master scheduling around that in a moment. And the benefit for students to be housed at Slater Middle School is that they would have the opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities such as sports and clubs, which would be provided by Slater Middle School. So proposed program enrollment. So we would take a look at any current sixth-grade students who are currently registered in our system, who would be interested in admittance into the seventh grade program. We would also have open registration to be offered to students from outside the district through the lottery process. Let me just make a note here. Per the charter agreements, the lottery window, if you will, or registration window is closing soon. And so legally, the site, so in this case, French American Charter, would have the ability to communicate to families now that there is the potential for the program to grow into a seventh and eighth grade, and therefore the site could take on additional registrations now, as long as the families were aware that this is not board-approved yet. And so that does allow the extension on the part of the site to share information on the potential of registration and the potential of the seventh grade program growing for the coming school year. There would be an enrollment limit on, excuse me, an enrollment would be limited only by the capacity of the charter school in any given year, and I'll talk about that in a moment. And just a reminder of our class sizes, which are per the collective bargaining agreement that we have with our labor group. And even though we are talking about seventh and eighth grade, there is a matriculation of student numbers, and so I just wanted to make sure we magnified those here. So currently, French American has 400 students as of January 31st of this year. The table on the left is the data that was reported during our Cbeds data upload in October. And the table on the right is current information. So as you can see, we currently have about 45 sixth graders. That would be our potential at a mid-level number that we could potentially take on into the program as seventh graders this coming school year. Just enrollment over years, to give a snapshot on the left, over years, starting from 2018, 2019, we, you know, have talked about declining enrollment in our district. So just a comparison of the charter against the district-wide numbers and decline in enrollment over years. And then, because you might be wondering, the capacity that Slater has to take on additional students, this is a look, again, the table on the left are the Cbeds numbers, and the table on the right is their current enrollment of 713. And just because someone might be thinking, there is a capacity of around 800 students at Slater. Slater enrollment over years, again, signaling some decline in enrollment of the program itself, but also the trend district-wide amongst middle schools, again, signaling the opportunity to house the program at Slater. So talking about the location, why Slater? So there is thinking that Slater is a practical location because it's literally on the same street as French American Charter. It's less than a mile and a half away. Some of our students do matriculate up into Slater, so it sort of becomes a home school area, if you will, for students to be housed from French American to the Slater campus. And as I mentioned before, with the size of Slater currently, they do have vacancy of some classrooms to house the program, starting with seventh grade and then building up to eighth grade. So this is an example, just one example of the type of courses of study that students would engage in, who would be students in the seventh grade program? If we were, and if the board were to approve the re-institution of seventh and eighth grade, starting with seventh grade next year. So for ease of looking at what a potential master schedule would look like and a student's schedule, what you would see in the morning here is science, French literature, and history and geography. These would be courses taught by a French American Charter School teacher, and these courses would be taught in French as part of French immersion. And then for ease of an example, after lunch, if you will, well, actually, before and after lunch, students would then engage, students from the charter school would then be intermingled with math, English, and PE courses that the Slater campus offers. So math, English, and PE would be taught by Slater teachers, if you will. And because if you look at this sample schedule, there isn't room for the addition of, the addition of other elective courses. And that's where we get into sort of the magic of master schedules because there could be some flexibility here with some other options. And while I show you, this particular example is clean, sort of a three-period and a three-period. It may not necessarily need to be that way. There might be some mixing and matching of when these courses are offered. When we get into the staffing, I'll explain why the courses have to be cored three and three, well, three courses from the French Charter, I should say. So as far as the staffing goes, in order for us to offer the three courses in French, we are looking at a single teacher with the appropriate credentials to be able to do that. Because we have, we do work with, and we are accredited through the French consulate, there is some work that we are doing with them around how we staff the French courses within the program. And then from the Slater Middle School side of the program, these would be individuals who have to be appropriately credentialed in each of the three subject areas that the students would be taking from the Slater campus. The French American seventh and eighth grade program would still be overseen by Ms. Anderson, who would be the principal of record of the seventh and eighth grade program, which is the satellite program on the Slater campus. And you can see here, the responsibilities of that position would include the programming, the curriculum, the teacher credentialing, the hiring, the evaluating, parent communication, parent committees and meetings, and working with the French Ministry, et cetera. And then the Slater administration would provide site supervision and would work collaboratively with Ms. Anderson regarding the scheduling of students into the non-French courses. We could also see some cosponsorship, if you will, of counseling support and some of the other services that are available on the Slater campus. So the overall fiscal outlook is just looking at the per pupil funding as the base grant for French American Charter. You can see here the per pupil funding of $8,909. There is some interest on the part of the French Ministry to assist in the funding of the teacher, the initial teacher at least, that would assist with the French courses at the satellite program. And we would be working with them further if the board were to, in fact, agree at a future board meeting to institute, reinstitute the seventh and eighth grades into the charter. But just looking at some high numbers cost-wise, so it's a .6 FTE or three sections for the French immersion part of the program, and then .6 FTE, which is also three sections. That's three different credential people, mind you, but the total cost therein would be roughly $60,000. Some additional costs that we would want to consider is, do we want to consider cost-sharing of site counselors or other support services, curriculum, materials, and supplies? And as the program grows into the eighth grade model and the number of students enrolled, we would absolutely need to consider growing another teacher for the French program, the French immersion side, and then additional sections for math, English, and PE on the Slater side, all would absolutely be dependent on the number of students that we have registered and enrolled. And then lastly here, in order for us to even consider this, we would need a minimum enrollment of 20 students to be fiscally sound and stable, to be able to move the program forward with grade level caps for the future of 60 students per grade level, so no more than 120 students total for the program in future years. And then the pathway to high school. Currently, Montgomery High School is sort of the neighborhood school that is the feeder from Slater into Montgomery. Certainly, we have a, you know, open enrollment, and so that isn't a given, per se. But there is, there are French courses offered at Montgomery High School. We do have IB French at Montgomery High School, and this could be a potential opportunity to grow that pathway into the IB program or into the French program itself. There would be a need to increase some of the offerings to more advanced offerings at Montgomery to give way for some of the learning that our French American Charter School students have already received previous to going to the high school. So some things that we would like to consider as we open it up for questions to the board. So does this opportunity create greater diversity of student and family demographics? Does this opportunity add additional fiscal burden to the French American Charter and/or to Slater? Does this provide an opportunity to improve students staying at their neighborhood schools? Can we think about improving the educational experience of French American students? What about Slater students? What would be the give between the French American program to the Slater program as an opportunity for Slater students? Does this opportunity create more inclusive, more of an inclusive experience for students and families? Meaning, does it give way for students with IEPs or students with special needs and English learners? And lastly here, and not least, does this opportunity to create a more equitable use of district resources, especially in light of declining enrollment? Do we want to consider this as an opportunity to retain students in the district? And so with that, I will stop sharing my screen and open it up for questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Trunell. We are bringing it back. Oh, did I freeze? Froze for a minute. There we go. Bringing it back to the board for questions. Do we have questions from the board at this time? Looking for hands. I see Dr. Fong.
Thank you, President Sheffield. Many questions, and I'm going to just kind of space them out. Thank you for that presentation, and all of you have worked on this. I'm sure it was a lot to work on. Superintendent Trunell, what, what have we learned from other work that we've done when we're combining a charter onto an existing campus? Namely, what have we learned from CCLA and Cook that is a consideration for you? I just beginning to think about this. I'm wondering what we've learned there to be able to move forward with this, with the, with the, you know, experiential learning in a way.
Certainly, and I will lean on colleagues, Deputy Superintendent Edson as well, as I begin to share some of what I've learned, but certainly don't have the historical, necessarily the entire historical perspective. But from what I understand, when we bring forward the opportunity to grow a charter and the space availability of that, it does push upon the, in questions, right? Questions begin to navigate themselves to where does the program go next? And the capacity of that program. You know, certainly, there are considerations that we need to make in terms of whether we, the board would consider a cap of a number of students in the program to sort of self-contain it on the space that we have available. But there's always the interest, right, to consider the what-ifs of growing the number of seats in a program. And certainly observing what I understand from the growth of CCLA, for example, moving from Comstock to Cook to becoming the sole entity on that site, it does allow for opportunities and questions about capacity if there was an interest to grow it beyond the perceived proposed cap that we are offering here tonight.
All right, to that, Superintendent Trunell. Good evening, members of the board. I think to answer your question, Lori, or Director Fong, excuse me, is that we're talking about two different things here first. One was a complete movement of a school from one campus to another. And the, and this is extension, if you will, extending grade level seven and eight to a different campus. So although there'll be a lot of similarities, there's considerable differences as well by still having, under this proposal, the French American Charter K through six, K through six at the current Sonoma Avenue campus. So I think, looking at it from that perspective, many of the things we would still want to do with the Slater campus, right, in terms of communication and outreach, to make sure that everyone understood the impact of moving this seventh and eighth grade to that school site. And really being able to explain the, the impact to, I'll say, the Slater education path, which has been the only path on that campus, and how that will. and how that will intertwine with the French-American charter pathway for those three classes that the superintendent shared in her presentation. And looking at it that way and knowing that unlike what we're doing at CCLA with neighborhood kids who are not part of the program, this would still be for students continuing in the pathway from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade, and then into high school, which would be, which would look different, but as the superintendent explained, on a path for foreign language and IB at the 11th and 12th grade levels as it stood today, taking into account other items that would have to be considered in the future. So I think from the standpoint of the dynamic of letting the community and the community, staff community know and understand exactly what was going on and the impact to that site would be the most important things, but also acknowledging that it's different than a full campus move to this later middle school. We're not proposing K through six also follow to that site.
Also, thank you. I also have a question about the French government funding the teacher, the .6 teacher. What happens in the second year? Are they going to be funding a 1.2 teacher? And have they been funding regular teachers K6 already?
I will ask Ms. Anderson, since she's had that conversation, if she could give some additional information.
Thank you. Hi, and I do not think, I think it would be a startup offering and possibly even not specifically to a teacher salary. It might even be to equipment or materials or other expenses. But not beyond the first year, probably. They do not support hard teachers, other than they pay teachers pensions, and obviously they've trained them to be the teachers that they are.
Do you have any concern that you may not be able to find a .6 teacher that can teach history, geography, science and French literature?
No, I've talked, I've talked already with, you know, in our best case scenario, our current Tosa would take on this role, and she is well-prepared to do that.
That's all the questions I have for now. President Sheffield, I've got more, but they're kind of scattered.
We'll circle back, definitely. Director De La Cruz.
Can I, can I let Director Manetti start? Because I think she's speaking from, from, from a perspective of representing her community and her district.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. And to that point, I'm wondering if there has been any consideration for this seventh and eighth program to actually be housed at CCLA? I mean, we already have a really wonderful place, a language academy. We have a language academy and this foundation that we've been working on as a district to have a language academy also at Elsie Allen High School. So I'm wondering if there was any consideration of that? And if there wasn't, why not?
Yes, I can say that there, that there was. So one of the things to consider here is first, the seventh and eighth grade was a part of the original charter. And so the request is a reinstatement of the program. So that's the first thing. The second is proximity, given the fact that you're going to have some sharing of staff between French-American and Slater. So I'm just kind of going down the path of why, you know, French-American to Slater, and then I'll talk about the, the other perspective of whether we moved it to CCLA. So there would be a reinstatement potentially on the part of the board, if so approved. And we could immediately begin that process for the fall of 2022. The proximity between the two sites being on the same street, also the sharing of staff for Principal Anderson to be able to get down to Slater if there are various needs. The proximity allows her to have that responsiveness in addition to the potential sharing of staff between the schools. The last piece is, you know, we've been looking for ways to build our IB program, and this is another potential for that. So that's the Slater-French-American consideration. If we're going to, and in thinking about the CCLA to Elsie pathway, that we would have to start at the beginning where we would do a review of the charter. We would have to begin surveying and doing the community forums, because this is not something that we are simply reinstating on, into the charter that existed once before, but it would be in addition to the charter as an additional pathway, if you will. And so that would take, at least, that would take the rest of this school year at least to do, which means we wouldn't be able to implement it in the fall. We would have to look at budgetary considerations and the size of the program. Certainly with the current work that is happening between CCLA and Elsie Allen, of which we are preparing some updates for you on the world, the new school, World House model. They're certainly still in the throes of that design process. And that only encompasses right now the bilingual Spanish program. So there could be a danger to also bring on a new facet through the French pathway immediately if we haven't ferreted through completely what they're currently working on. So we could be looking at a year to a year and a half before we could potentially implement a French pathway into the language academy and matriculating into Elsie Allen. Meanwhile, we could be losing student enrollment again to the Rincon Valley Unified District in the meantime. So we're looking to try and retain students into our program as one of our goals. I hope that makes sense.
Just for clarifying, Superintendent Trinell, the difference between the two charters, one would be reinstating what was removed from the charter for the French-American school, and if we were to be looking at CCLA, that would be expanding charter language, and that might be a longer roundabout process. Is that?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, continue, Director Manieri.
I mean, that was my big question, and I appreciate the response. I have kind of some other smaller questions around this same issue. It's actually more discussion than a question. So for on questions, I can pass it on to Director Delacruz.
Thank you, Director Manetti.
Director De La Cruz, can I just continue real briefly on the, we had brought up losing students to to Rincon Valley, to Spring Lake, and I'm wondering, in the analysis that was done for, by Principal Anderson, do we, do we have a sense of how many number-wise students were losing to Spring Lake?
So in a typical year, we lose almost all of the students to Spring Lake. This year of, there are about 23 who said they would be seriously interested in attending SRFAX seventh grade, and 18 that said they would stay at Spring Lake because of siblings and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Principal Anderson. Director De La Cruz.
Has there been any calculation of costs to move to CCLA in the, you know, and thinking about how to support that creation of a language academy that connects CCLA to Elsie and really addresses the declining resources to Southwest Santa Rosa's district here? So we've done that analysis of what's going to the east side versus what's going to the west side, especially in light of the Cook closure and the impacts that we know is already happening to Elsie.
I can speak to, we have not done an in-depth analysis of the cost. However, given what we know about, it would probably be very, it would be unlikely that we would have to then, sorry, let me back up. We would more than likely not be expanding the French-American charter school. We would actually be expanding the CCLA charter. And so in that, we would have to look at staffing that's currently on-site. And if we're expanding a French pathway, we would have to hire additional staff for that, in addition to the sections that it would bring on by just simply having additional students in the middle school program, for example. So just on the outset, I'm just in my head estimating the cost would be higher because of that.
Right. So I guess what I'm looking at is, has there been an analysis of the removal of resources from Elsie, from Cook, from CCLA? Are we understanding this as a, as a much bigger picture rather than just a choice to, you know, put additional resources to Slater and Monty's programs rather than dealing with the larger context of board action and closing the public middle school on the west side and impacting, we know, impacting Elsie? So how are we, how are we really allowing for this analysis to be done in a way that is holistic and that centers communities that we've already removed resources from? Right? Like, I understand the analysis of this one step, Slater to Monty, but I really, I'm looking for a much bigger analysis here, recognizing that we sit in a context where we've already made, you know, some very thoughtful decisions around closing Cook and recognizing the need for us to invest and to address the resource drain that our decisions have placed on west, on the west side, which is the area in our, in our system that can least withstand losing additional resources and watching those resources flow to the east side. So how is our analysis pulling up and out of this one specific narrow kind of decision in front of us and really recognizing the greater cost to our system and to the, and to the west side in particular?
So two, two trains of thought here. The first is, you know, per the request of the charter, we are bringing forward the information that, that we have available to us from the interest. So that's, that's the first piece as it regard, in regard to the French-American charter. The second is, we are very happy to bring back that level of analysis that's on the greater scale that you are mentioning, Director De La Cruz. We don't have that available for you tonight, because tonight's conversation isn't a look at more of the global perspective on that. It really is based on the request from French-American charter to consider the reinstatement of seventh and eighth grade. But we can certainly, we'd be happy to bring you some information about that more global perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director De La Cruz. Director McCormick.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I have three questions. One concerning the declining enrollment slide that you showed. Do we know? I mean, I looked at the numbers, and it looked like our numbers, our current numbers were higher in the lower grades than the upper grades. Is the, is that, because it looked like it had a little bit more dramatic decline in enrollment than the overall district's declining enrollment? And so I'm wondering, do we know, is it the, like, fourth, fifth, sixth grades or fifth, sixth grades that that declining enrollment is mainly being represented in? Do we know which grades are declining? Or is there a pattern in that?
I think, Principal Anderson, if you don't mind addressing that question.
Surely. Yes, it is the upper grades, and part of that is they go to Shrax, frankly. And the other point is they don't have somewhere to go, right? So they feel like they get a good foundation in French, but what happens next? And I have to say, in addition, the biggest hit was distance learning, because we really could not provide an immersion language program in distance learning. So people found another option.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, so I was wondering, I was, I didn't want to make the assumption that that was happening, but I, I figured that was part of the main reason is that we don't have seventh and eighth grade in here as an option at the moment. And I appreciate you saying that about distance learning as well. Just a side note before I get to my next question, to back up to Director De La Cruz's more global, coming back to a more global analysis as we go forward on this, which I know tonight might not be the night to do that, but I would be interested to see if CCLA has also struggled with declining enrollment for similar, or find out if there has been similar issues with distance education being really dramatically hurting an immersion, a language immersion school. So that'd be kind of an interesting Z factor to compare, just to see. Because it's hard to tell where California is facing decline enrollment, Sonoma County is facing decline enrollment, and then we have the pandemic and distance education. So it's hard to sift through all of that and figure out what are the reasons why students are leaving our district or leaving particular schools. So I'd be interested in that as a follow-up. My next question was, Superintendent Trinell, you said we would need to have a minimum of 20 seventh graders registered to make this fiscally viable. I know we've heard from some parents in our public comments, and I'm wondering if, do we have a signup list? Have people registered for this yet? I'm assuming not, because it's not approved of yet, but does it look like we have at least 20 people that are seriously considering this? Did I miss that somewhere earlier?
So in the survey, and Principal Anderson could speak to this as well, in the survey, we had 22 to 23 families or students, if you will, who said that if we did this, they would come. Now, mind you, as we're literally discussing this right now, registration and open enrollment is happening both in our district and in other places. And so families are making those choices now. But I imagine, and I imagine, and Principal Anderson, please speak to this as you've been hearing from families, what the potential would be if the board were to approve the reinstatement of seventh and eighth grade.
Yes, I feel like the, the probably those 23 people are still pretty strong. I wonder, I, I, well, I think that they are. I also am getting inquiries from families whose students attended SRFAX in the past and are now, you know, sixth graders at another school, and they're interested as well. So I think there's good reason to believe we would get the 20 students.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, I'm glad that you established or addressed, you know, after, if we were to add the seventh and eighth back into the charter and what that means for matriculation to the high school, and that you focused particularly on Montgomery and the IB program. Has there also been consideration to to the Elsie program and moving toward, you know, global languages program that we're trying to develop there? So it has, is there any proposal or thought or plan that this could perhaps, regardless of location of where the seventh and eighth grade, if we were to extend the charter to seventh and eighth, to include seventh and eighth grade, regardless of location of where the seventh and eighth grade classes are, is, have we looked at, also looking at building like two pathways, perhaps, instead of just one to Montgomery? Because that's very logical, because of the location and most Slater students. I would say most Slater students probably go to Montgomery, but we do have, as we know, and this is because there's good sides and bad sides of this in our district, but we have a lot of movement, and I still think bigger picture outside of this conversation, that board policy around moving, going, attending a school not in your district or your neighborhood district where the lines are drawn is a major issue, and that's a policy that just keeps coming up. And until we address that policy, I think the, all these conversations are going to be very controversial and very hard to decipher and make good decisions based on our MVP. But, so I'm just wondering, do we, has there been thought about possibly funneling? Setting up two options, one to Montgomery's IB program, one to ELSI's program, world languages program that they're starting to develop out of this?
Right.
Out of curiosity.
Yeah, that's a great question. And this is where I get excited about the possibilities for our students because while we demonstrated a potential pathway to Montgomery, it won't be the only pathway. And what's good about the timing of this is that these students would be entering seventh grade. So we would have the time to allow ELSI, for example, to develop their program so that there is the ability to house exactly what we're trying to do, to have multiple languages and to have that world school model at ELSI. So this gives us the time to do that. It also gives multiple schools in our district, since we do have open enrollment. It gives multiple schools the opportunity to potentially provide, you know, the option for any students who leave the program. But certainly because we are focused on ELSI Allen as a world school model, yes, that would be also a consideration. I, I put Montgomery on here as an example, but just like the master schedule example, there is flexibility. And these students would be, would not be going into ELSI or any other school next year. So in two years, that would be the potential, which gives us the time to build.
Yeah. So that would be interesting to get a little more information on that as well, because even like Pioneer's ECM program would be another good one because they could take high level French classes at San Rosa JC and be able to double down with their credits at Pioneer as well. So I'm just thinking of ones just off the top of my head, but I think that would be, that would be important for me to know if we really have that established and there's a plan established going forward with this, to really specifically look at using this program that's extended seventh, eighth grade charter as a springboard that people can leap off into, into different areas where being bilingual, bilingual and coming out of a French immersion program could just like set them up for success and to kind of with different angles and different emphasis at different high schools. So I'd be really interested in hearing more about that too. Thank you.
Superintendent Trinau, you brought up enrollment happening right now, and I'm just wondering, how does this impact our timeline? To take this as a board action item?
If Principal Anderson, if you could speak to the current charter enrollment timeline. And then Mr. Yay, if you could speak to some of the leverage and as far as some of the communication that could be done during this timeline or an extension?
Yes, as I understand what we can do is tomorrow morning, we can request to have an additional grade added to our lottery, our online application with the, the language around the fact that the board is not approved, this is pending board approval.
And the window closes?
On the eighth.
Okay, yeah. So it's the day before the board meeting.
Yeah. So then we'd need to have the real campaign for getting out the word that all of those 23 people, for example, need to get on, on, and get their application in.
This is John Yay, attorney for the board. And the other part of that is that we would, the district would disclose to the public that the addition of, of the seventh grade would be contingent upon board action to take place next week as well, just for the sake of transparency. So they know that, that the board, board approval has to occur before this program is added for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Yay. Trustee Flores, you have your hand?
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to say that I, I want to make sure that we have equitable that equitable funding is going to different resources throughout our district. Okay. Just, I just, I just have to say that. Now, in terms of enrollment for students, you know, you, you need a minimum of 20, right? How long do you have to, you know, how long will that take? I mean, the whole recruitment process, right? Cause you have to have at least 20. And you've only had about, you know, about 23 families. And, and I understand that attrition kicks in, you know, every year, right? Having that, you know, that threshold of only three families or three students, it's, 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 it's pretty scary, right? So how, how long will you have in order to make sure that you meet that minimum threshold? Cause it sounds like you're going to have to do a lot of recruitment process, right? So this is due on the eighth and then you have until when? To make sure you have 20 students? I kind of missed that. And that goes through the timeline that President Sheffield was talking about, but I missed it. Sorry about that.
So one question I actually have is, the lottery is usually because we don't have enough space for the, all the students who want to attend the school. So if the lottery window closes, would it not be simply enrolling in the program after that? Wouldn't students still be allowed to enroll in the program?
I, I can address that. The, the way that the charter's admissions process is set up. That's correct, that the lottery only takes place if there are more applicants than seats. So in fact, if, if the admissions deadline comes and there is still, there are still seats, certainly the school could continue to.
And when do we, you know, say we don't have enough seats? I mean, worst, worst case scenario, right? You, you don't have enough seats. When, when do we make that decision to make sure that, you know, we're not hiring someone, you know, with a .6 FTE for, for this?
That's a great question. I think part of this would be dependent on board approval. And then looking at how we typically look at staffing, how we typically look at staffing programs. Because there is an expectation to start building in, you know, those opportunities for staffing. We have certain expectations on the part of our labor groups on when we, when we would be messaging the assignments for next year. All of that is, you know, certainly by March, April, that we would be doing those things. So we would have to have a clear indication and please correct me, team, if you think otherwise, but we would certainly need to know, I would say no later than April in order for us to be able to move forward accordingly. However, we, under our regular programs, we continue to take enrollment throughout the year and the summer. And so that is something else that we may want to take into consideration. I see Mr. Edson, Deputy Superintendent Edson.
Thank you. I'd just like to add to that too. I, I think for the first year is a little bit different with this program as well as they're ramping up. Because the teacher is already part of their team for seventh grade, being a TOSA currently. And then taking on the responsibility for seventh grade for the three classes. And then continuing TOSA work beyond that, as I understand it, and Ms. Anderson can correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that, you know, with that built in, it provides some safety net for at least year one. And then we'd have to go through our normal recruitment process, looking at, you know, the, the through line, if you will, of students in five, four, three, two, and one as we project up. Because we know that we're likely, just as it would be at CCLA, it's incredibly difficult to have a student come in at the later years, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, with the level of fluency, writing and speaking proficiency for that, that charter school. So this, I would say this would be the, the, the exception for the first year because of the teacher on board already.
I just have to say that we have a total order here, right? You know, if, if we go this route and we do not meet the threshold, right? We're going to have a lot of families who are upset. So it's just, I, I just want to be cognizant and aware that, you know, there is a minimum threshold that we have to meet. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done to make sure we, we meet that threshold. Because if we don't, you know, we're going to have to disappoint quite a few families that, you know, are set at doing this. And, and you know, what are we going to do with that TOSA? You know, I'm, I'm sure that TOSA has another job already.
So yeah, she's kept very busy already. So not a problem.
All right. I mean, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Trustee Flores. Coming back to you, Trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you. A couple, a couple more questions, and I don't necessarily need answers to this right now, but do we have the space at CCLA?
We have not done that level of analysis. I don't know if, that's, that's information we certainly can bring back.
And, you know, one of the things that we're doing at the county of Sonoma right now in equity work is really asking ourselves the question like, what is the proposal here? And, you know, who, who is going to be impacted? And how, how do we understand ways to be very clear about the impacts? And so I'm just wondering, like, as we come up with this proposal, how are we understanding who is being centered in this moment with this decision? Who, who, who is at the center of our decision here?
Are you asking for an answer to that or?
If there is, and if not, yeah.
So I, so I think on the, the onset here, this, who is at the center is our current students who are in the program, who we lose if we don't extend the program, right? So that's currently at the center of this conversation tonight. I think for what it's worth, what the board has provided us is a broader perspective that we would need to bring back in a separate board agenda item to discuss the broadening and actual effects of what it means for other areas such as CCLA and ELSI.
And then in terms of the analysis around how many teachers we would have to hire or what, what is the level of investment that would be made in CCLA? If that is the direction that ultimately this goes, has that analysis been done at all?
Again, just for the point of clarification, this item tonight is to discuss the interest and request that was brought forward for the expansion or reinstatement of the seventh and eighth grade on the French American Charter or within the French American Charter. The questions that the board is bringing forward outside of that is information we would have to bring back to you.
Okay, thanks.
I see Trustee Manieri.
So I'm wondering, because I, I totally hear you Superintendent, that, you know, what we're focusing on is the reinstating of the seventh and eighth grade charter. And so, you know, what has been presented to us today is, it's just one option. And that one option is to have this program located at Slater. And so I know that we have had conversations in the past this board about the potential, and not specifically the French American Charter, but of any language programs that we, that we have in the district for, for those to be invested in, in, in certain locations like CCLA and like LCL and high school. So I guess my question is like, and, and, and it's not like the, it's not about the logistics. Like I, I understand the logistics behind why Slater is, is a good option and it, and it might be the, the really like expedient option. But I'm wondering, why, why didn't we consider CCLA off the bat when we have had certain conversations about supporting language programs on the west side with CCLA and LCL and high school?
Great question. I think I can address that. Going back to, part of it was timing, Director Manieri. So if we do this with French American, we could almost do it immediately. Which then we don't lose students, right? From our system. If we decide to go the CCLA to ELSI Allen route, it's going to take more time. And given the current design work that both of those campuses are doing, we wouldn't have been able to several months ago, layer this on top of that. We were actually doing the work of whether CCLA would be named CCLA officially. That's the work that was actually happening previously. In addition to the layer of the WASC visitation work that ELSI Allen is currently undergoing. So there wasn't really the time for us to consider layering this on as a matriculated pathway over to CCLA and to ELSI Allen. However, for the outset of potential, we can certainly bring back that information if that is something that the board is interested in looking at. But it was really about the timing and the immediacy and also currently what was happening between CCLA and ELSI Allen.
I, I appreciate that. And it is something that I would definitely like to see in, in a future meeting. I would love that information to be brought back. And my other question is really revolving around what Director McCormick said a little bit ago. About how there, like there, there is, I totally, and I appreciate your mindset, Director McCormick. Like I totally see the opportunity at the high school level for expansion. And so I'm wondering if what is needed is time, can we also do that? Can we start that process with, with the middle schools? With, with, I mean, particularly specifically with CCLA, if what is needed is time to also have an option for those leaving sixth grade who might be on the west side. I mean, I imagine that kids are coming from all, from different parts of our district to go to the French Academy. So for them to have an option maybe in, in their neighborhood school. I don't even know if we have data around that, but it would be great for us to know where the students are coming from, because it might justify expanding the, like a seventh and eighth grade French program at CCLA.
Thank you. I've noted that request.
Thank you, Director Manieri. I'm just wondering, we have capacity at Slater, I think it was 800. And that gives us room for 90 to 100 students right now. I believe we're hovering around that 700. Does that, does that sound right? I, you know, I, I, what I'm getting at is that, you know, I, I certainly see the benefits of capturing students leaving the district. And this is something that we know is happening on, on, on a yearly basis. Obviously something that's happening right now. So the, you know, looking at this cost benefit of keeping students in the district versus the, our, our means to act rather quickly to do so. Again, looking at sort of the feasibility, I know we have, we have that focus, that emphasis on equity and maybe this isn't necessarily the most equitable way of doing it, but it is, it is an effective way of doing it for students who would otherwise be, would be transferring out of district and then popping right back into district. So I just, I, I wanted to point that out and maybe go a little bit further on the discussion. It was, I, I, I believe in the presentation, we heard that students would be housed at the, at the Slater campus, but they would be considered the French American students. And I'm wondering, how would that impact us in any way, having them be identified at the charter as opposed to being identified at Slater? Does that impact us fiscally? Is there, is there, what, what's the dollar loss of having them? Or is there a dollar loss of having them at, at French American versus, versus Slater?
I'll ask Deputy Superintendent Edson for that one.
Right now, it'd be very minimal, Director Sheffield, if any. The students can only be registered to one LEA. So we would have to pick one or the other and keeping them as part of the French American Charter certainly fills that path, right? In terms of continuing on through that charter program in, in seventh grade and then into eighth grade. Costs associated with other services on the Slater campus or other providing for sections, right? If we had to.
Yeah, we can share resources. I understand that.
Right. Well, we would charge back to the charter for the funds that they receive, right? So it would offset those costs is where I was going with the Slater kids, but we can't split ADA. We can't say half of the kid goes to Slater and the other half goes to French American and then collect those funds.
So then what is the, what is the re, I mean, is it just identity? Is that, Principal Anderson, is that the sole purpose for having the students be counted at, at, at French American?
There's also the matter of accreditation.
There's also the matter of accreditation and who is teaching. So in order to have a French teacher who's here from France, she has to be working, or he has to be working for an accredited school in order to keep her pension and all, all types of other element factors there. And so if the program were, did not belong to the French American Charter School, it wouldn't be, they, it wouldn't be an accredited program. I don't know how attractive that would be to families, and you certainly wouldn't be able to hire a teacher from France.
Thank you. Trustee Fong.
Just point of order, are we also in discussion?
This is a study session, so.
It's all discussion here, so.
All right. So I just want to remind the board that we got a petition signed by over 300 people. It was an email to you on January 13th from Parent Ben Wolf. And there's a lot of support for this. There's a lot of parent support for this. And I need, I want us to pay attention to that. Also, the question I actually have is, Principal Anderson, do you have any accounting of the homeschool, homeschool area of your current students?
The last time we did that analysis, over 60% were not from Santa Rosa City Schools. Currently, in the lottery, we have 115 applicants. You know, a lot of people are waiting till the last minute, but so far out of those, 81 are from out of district. So it gives a sense of the trend is that the vast majority of our students do not come from in district.
Yet they're staying to go to the Rincon Valley School that's offering French?
Because of the French.
Is that French, an immersion program, or is it just?
No, it's not. It's, it's French courses.
Just French cour, just a French course?
I think they do two courses.
All right. I'm, I'm just going to go on record right now to say that I fully support reinstating the charter to seventh and eighth and placing them at Slater. And this is born out of years of working with Montgomery High School and the IB program. And this is something that Montgomery wanted for and was interested in a long, long time. Some history here is that at one point in Tim Zalnardo, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Tim Zalnardo was a huge part of this at the time that we wanted to create a middle years program at Slater. And that middle years program was going to serve the kids to matriculate to the IB program at Montgomery High School. And so the middle years program is actually, I think, grades six, seven, eight, nine, 10, or maybe just seven, eight, nine, 10. And it was an expansion of IB. At that point, the board denied it, and it was because of resources. They were not going to invest those resources at whatever economic situation we were in then. We're not going to invest those resources in the IB program. So when we're talking about resources, I have to point out that I believe that the IB program really does not, it operates on a shoestring. You know, there's a coordinator for two periods only. It's also taken out of their staffing. I don't know, you guys are going to have to do that a better job than I've spent a few years. And when we're talking about resources, I think that, and when I look at, and I'm, and I'm a champion of CCLA, and I'm champion of LCL and that I'm really pleased with what's going on with, with CCLA, Cook, CCLA and LCL and because I know that we're investing a lot in World House, we're investing a lot in CTE programs there, we're investing a lot in the Spanish immersion portion of LCL and, and visiting with Principal Alba Vera, it's exciting what's happening there. They're on a trajectory, they're on a path. And I think that if we were going to pull the brakes on this French, on the French thing, that we would completely just derail or slow down their path, because they're getting ready for the CCLA kids now over there. Whereas I believe that it seems to be a natural fit for, to move in, in the same geographical area from Shrap to Slater to SR Facts to Slater to Montgomery and the IB program. So that's my comment. And I do want to make sure that, that board remembers that there was a petition.
One, one thing that does stand out, Principal Anderson, was the, the number you said of enrollees who were coming from out of district. That, I, I did not know, I had no idea. That's, that's a pretty high number that we're actually drawing in, that then, then again, move out of the district, move back out of the district. So that, that's a big number for us to consider, a number that we would be capturing. Trustee De La Cruz.
Thanks. I, you know, I, I want to go on record that I completely support the expansion of the charter to seventh and eighth. Right? And I feel like I don't want any of my comments or requests for additional information to, to reflect that I'm not in complete and total support for expanding this charter. And I think, you know, if there's anything that our world tells us is that being bilingual, being bilingual, and being bicultural is an asset and something to celebrate and champion and make sure that we continue to resource. I think my biggest concern with this is that, you know, this is not just in the context of what I recognize are years and years of really good work to support the IB program, to support, you know, what Monty is doing. But this is also in the very much more recent backdrop of having closed a middle school on the southwest side of Santa Rosa in an area that we know has experienced historical disinvestment by this board, that this board was also dedicated to remedy. And I know that this is, logistically, it makes sense. We've also recognized that our schools continue, unless we are really intentional about desegregating our schools and making choices that help our, our community as a whole recognize the benefit of being in desegregated schools. That's a different way of understanding kind of diversity, right? But really, the, the benefit of being in desegregated schools, that's, that's what I'm hoping that we center here. And this, this action isn't in line with what this board did when we closed Slater and the dedication that we have to making sure that we are dedicating resources in an equitable way to continue to support schools that have been disproportionately impacted by our very recent past decisions. And so, you know, I'm, I'm really requesting that we take that, that global look at every action that we take. That's what equity requires us to do, is not to, not to look at just the narrow options before us, just one option, but also to really take into consideration what are the things that need to be in place in order to ensure that CCLA's trajectory and LC's trajectory is actually kind of like, you know, ramped up even higher? What are those resources that need to be directed to CCLA and LC to make this transition and to make that, you know, that world culture, that world language place be a draw that will, you know, as we've recognized, this kind of program draws people from outside of our district in really beautiful ways. How can we make sure that that same feeling of wanting to be in these excellent, high-quality programs that, you know, really do embrace that idea of how beautiful it is to learn in a desegregated school? How beautiful it is to learn in a place that celebrates and recognizes language and biculturality as an asset? That's what I'm really hoping that we see as an opportunity here and not get stuck in, you know, what feels like a very narrow path that we've been slid into because of urgency. And I, you know, I'm so super grateful for the 300 very involved parents. I have loved seeing them participate and hearing that. And I, you know, I also want to recognize that there's many times that urgency is grounded in white supremacy. That's another kind of like principal tenant in equity. And unless we really challenge, right, and say, yes, this is urgent, and we have this big, huge additional question that is going to be hard and that's going to require additional investment in a very intentional way, in the same way that we, we had that intentionality when we closed Cook. We recognized that we were going to hurt LC. And this decision is doubling down on that harm. And I don't see right now a very clear path towards making sure that we continue to mitigate that harm. Or, and, and, and to, and to just, you know, to, to, to open up and, and think of our actions in this bigger context. So, you know, please know that I'm in total support of expanding this charter. And I'm also in support of continuing our work to, to ensure that our system and our district is equitable and that we are drawing people into these excellent places that, you know, the, the creativity and the beauty and the dedication of so many excellent people for decades has, has created with the French American Charter School, with the creation of CCLA, with the recognition that LC is going to be a world house. How are we taking all those things at once, right, and not seeing these things as narrow choices? My, my fear is, this is easy, right? This is logistically simple. It costs less, but if we're not looking at the bigger picture, it actually costs more. It costs more to the kids who have least, who are at least able to, to shoulder that cost. And I just really want to have that be in the center of our decision as we continue to, to face these kind of little decisions, but that actually have massive impacts again, to the kids and to the sides of our, of our, of our community that can't shoulder that additional cost at this stage. Especially in light of this pandemic, and especially in light of the disproportionality that we continue to see this community, these communities shouldering unnecessarily. And so, you know, so I'll get off my soapbox, but yes, to expanding the charter, please continue to take that big picture view and to recognize that this board has dedicated, you know, significant amounts of time and tears and, and work to making sure that we have that global perspective and that we really understand those costs that typically don't get captured when we're in a narrow, in a narrow, like, in, in that narrow scope. And that what equity requires is that equity analysis every single time we make a decision. And this decision feels like another missed opportunity for us to have done that analysis and to present, you know, we're going to take this step, and then we're going to take this step and this step. And the path leads us to supporting LC Allen, which needs us to, needs us to support it, especially in light of our past decision to close Cook. So thank you. And I look forward to getting that information and to really being able to engage in that, in that deeper and broader analysis that our district as a whole has, you know, requires us to do. And, and that, you know, I feel like our board has been united in celebrating these opportunities and, and also challenging ourselves to, to, to operate outside of the status quo and to recognize that the status quo hurts kids of color. It has hurt the southwest side of Santa Rosa. It has hurt a specific part of our district that we continue to cause harm to unless we do things differently. So.
Thank you, Trustee De La Cruz, well said. You know, I'm, I'm looking at the time. Now, we know that there are trustees that need to leave in the next few minutes. Want to remind you that no action is being taken on this tonight, other than we do have to acknowledge that enrollment is happening right now. And so I, I, I do want to go to Trustee Manieri.
I'll just be really quick. Everything that I, I wanted to say and, and then what was feeling and didn't have the words to articulate, Director De La Cruz totally, totally said it all. And so all I will request, and, and likewise, I just want to say that I, I support the expansion, and I think that this is a really beautiful opportunity, and I don't want to miss out on any opportunities. And, and even though this is one, one decision that we're, we're looking at or that we need to make, there are implications. And so what I would like to see, actually, I would like to request to be brought back to the board in equity analysis a, a, as best as possible to help us understand what this means for the rest of the district, particularly for CCLA and LC Allen. And I would like regular updates on the process, and not just this process of expanding, but also any updates on what we're doing big picture wise. So I, I think that that was kind of part of what was missed here in this conversation was looking at the issue and then looking at the big picture. I would like for us to continue having the big picture conversations.
Director Manieri, when you say regular updates, and we, we, you know, we make this request sometimes, so there are some specifics you can tie to, to that?
Yeah, I really appreciate our Friday, our Friday updates from the superintendent, anything that can be shared there. That might be just kind of smaller steps that totally don't require an entire hour at a meeting. That would be really great. If there's anything, I think, an analysis and a discussion of impact is, is something that needs to be brought back to the board and for us to discuss in a, in a public meeting. But when, when I'm, really what I mean about regular updates is anything that doesn't, doesn't have to be a big meeting agenda item in, in the, in the weekly superintendent reports.
Superintendent Trunel.
I just want to acknowledge everything that members of our board have shared tonight. And certainly in what Director De La Cruz and Director Manieri have shared. I just want to be sure, because I, I, I want to be sure that our, our guests, our public understands that the work that was actually being outlined that Director De La Cruz and Director Manieri and others have shared is actually already work, is current work that we're doing at CCLA and LC Allen. And that is what I mentioned at the beginning, that we're already poised to bring forward updates around that work, which signals the opportunity to grow the world school model with bilingual programs between CCLA and LC Allen. So I just want to ensure that our, our folks who are with us tonight know that that work has actually been ongoing. And it's something that we were prepared to bring forward as additional updates. I think what the discussion tonight has presented is the, sort of the convergence and ability to do something immediate and also in the, in the long term, something that becomes a part of our system. And I appreciate the board for the various angles that you've uncovered for us during the conversation. It provides the lens and perspective of our future work to encompass all of the things that have been mentioned tonight, as I started the meeting tonight with bringing forward some information so that the board could see and assist us in seeing the multiple angles of this conversation.
So in, before we close the meeting, and, and Director McCormick, I see your hand raised, I, I'm just wondering, Superintendent Trunel, you know, there, there were a number of proposals of information to bring back to the board. And, you know, jotting notes down. I'm, you know, when, when will we see this come back to the board? When will we see this information come back? And how, I guess?
Yeah, so I think that's something that I would like to discuss further with you. And decide as far as board agenda items are concerned, President Sheffield, when the, the appropriate time would be.
Okay. And I'm, again, because, you know, we're, we, we are wanting to act, I, you know, it shouldn't be our driving factor, but we do have to be definitely mindful, considerate of the timeline here. You know, so I just wanted to be clear that, you know, when we say we're bringing it back, that we're, we're talking about, you know, we're going to have continued discussion, ongoing discussion. And, and, and sit tight, folks, you know, we are, we'll be providing the information requested from trustees. Trustee McCormick?
So first of all, I want to say that I am in support of extending the charter for seventh and eighth grade. Very much in support of that. And I am also in support of housing it at Slater. I'm very much in align, alignment with my thinking, what Director Fong said specifically about Slater and Montgomery's IB program. I think a perspective that Dr. Fong and I share is that we have worked, we have lived in this district and worked in this district for a long time, and we've seen, and we are very aware of the equity struggles and some of the breakdown that we have in our district and the floating around of our families to different schools, in particular, the high schools. And I think, just for some perspective and like trying to wrap my brain around this, you know, to stay, to address that issue, but also to build off a program that has good momentum and interest. Well, I will say, my mind's kind of jumbled all over the place on this, but I will say that when we were struggling with our decisions. with our decisions about closing Cook and moving CCLA there onto that campus. And that was a hard decision. And that's why it comes up a lot in our board meetings now, because we remember how tough that was and we were really trying to take everything into consideration. And what really pushed me over the edge that night, because I was very hesitant to do it myself in the moment, was the momentum and the interest and the advocacy that was coming from the CCLA community and parents and students and staff. And it was a program that was really on the way up, thriving, building, going. And it is hard, especially right now, to have, to create momentum in public schools, just in general, and in California. And so, when you see that spark, I think it's really important to jump on, on that and, and feed that. And I feel like we are experiencing that and have an opportunity here to, to expand this charter school. And I was also intrigued by the fact that Principal Anderson said that, you know, over 60% the students coming into the program now are outside of our district. And then we lose them again, and that's an opportunity, that's a missed opportunity. If we can keep them in the district, I think that's great, especially in light of declining enrollment all the way around. But I think really what it comes down to, and this is evident in our discussion tonight, is that I don't think the elephant in the room is extending this charter to seventh and eighth grade and housing it at Slater. I think the elephant in the room is our board policy on open enrollment. And until we address that, we're just going to talk in circles about this. When these opportunities come up and we have to make decisions. And I really feel like that is, that's the elephant in the room. And that's where the inequities lie. And, and that is, that is the foundation, that is the cause, that is the rub. So, I really appreciate what Director De La Cruz shared and what Director Manieri and Director Flores shared and what Director Fong shared. Because this is, it is a tug and a pull and it's really hard. But I think, I think that is what we need to address. And, you know, I, I saw, this is very personal for me all the time, because I was working at Piner when LC and Maria Creo opened as high schools. And I watched it really tear apart the Piner community as, you know, we, with the floodgates open on open enrollment. And that was in the 90s and we have yet to really address it. And it keeps presenting a problem, time after time, year after year, board after board. So I really think that's the elephant in the room. So I think that's a discussion for another meeting and another time. But I think it is very important that we address that and call that out. But for the viability of the program and the opportunity we have to attract students into our district and keep students in our district. And yes, as you're saying, Director De La Cruz, it is, you know, logistically, an easier choice to keep it at Slater. But I was very intrigued about the idea of like, we have a principal, we have shared principals and shared staff. And to be on two different sides of town is going to, that's going to be a logistical nightmare. So I think in order for the program, I think it makes a lot of sense. But I do want to address the open enrollment, which is a different issue. And I want to really piggyback on, you know, finding ways to directly connect that, use this as another launching opportunity into different, the different magnet programs that the high schools have. And the whole reason why we have magnet programs at our high schools now is because we have competition for enrollment at our high schools, again, because of our open enrollment policy. So that is a problem and we're going to need to address that. But those are my thoughts and I am in support of this. And if it comes up as an action item to extend it and to house it at Slater, I would support that.
Thank you, Trustee McCormick. Trustee Flores.
I'll be very quick. I just want to say that I am in support. I just want to go on, on the record that I'm in support with the, the expansion of the charter. Okay, so, and I, and I think you're, you're hearing the same from everyone, Principal Anderson, okay? I, I don't want to take too much more time. A lot of the things that I've been thinking of, you know, Director De La Cruz, that is so eloquently. But I just want you to know, Principal Anderson, that, you know, but the majority of this board is in support of, of, of what's been discussed tonight, okay?
Thank you, Trustee Flores. Trustee Fong.
I want to reiterate what Vice President McCormick said about open enrollment. Open enrollment is where we need to pay attention if we're really talking about equity choice and where kids are going. And that placing seventh and eighth, SR Facts on the LC campus or the Cook or the CCLA campus won't remedy that. It's open enrollment that's going to remedy that. I want to make, also, I don't want to derail the work that's going on right now to Elsie. We only have so much bandwidth, folks just have so much bandwidth. And so, to lay this on top of them now, or even in a year, it, it's not going to happen. They've been working on, on this for CCLA, for LCL and for two full years now. It just won't happen and we're going to be stalled out. I mean, that is the reality, that is the logistical reality of our work. And so, we have a clear path right now. We have people in line for it. We have a teacher ready to go. We haven't heard from Principal Tucker, we haven't heard from Principal Paulson, so maybe we should do that also.
Well, yes.
I don't know, President Sheffield, that, that not, might be part of your program right now tonight, but we did not.
No, that's quite, all, quite all right. You know, I, I, I do, again, wanting to be mindful of people's time. And we have not heard from Principal Paulson. I, I saw you, you move. And so, we do have Principal Tucker as well. If you would like to add to this conversation, sure, definitely. Let us know if you want, if you want to contribute to this conversation, please.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, one of the big reasons I came to Monty was I was very excited to be a principal at an Ivy school. You know, my own personal philosophy of education is, is, has that global view. And, you know, I am a big proponent of, of, you know, dual language at the high school. So, any opportunities we get to bring more students to Montgomery from outside our district, you know, because we have pathways, I would definitely be in support of. I'll just be brief and say that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Anything to add, Principal Tucker?
Yeah, I would just, I would just add that I've been working with Evelyn, you know, on this issue for the last couple of years. It's been in discussion, if not three. And we have had declining enrollment at Slater since I, it's my fourth year. And I fully support having more students and more diversity. We have the room. And, and losing those students, you know, that we do, we get, we get a few of the French-American students, but, but, but a small percentage, so. But I'm, I'm listening to all of this great conversation and it all makes sense. And, and we're there, we're there and, and ready to go if needed. And if that's not the path, then, then we're prepared for that as well.
Thank you. Principal Anderson, you're, you're seeing support. You're seeing definitely the majority of the board, I have not signaled. Yes, I support the proposal as well. If that is enough to give some indication for us to at least begin heading down that road. I know that there are steps that need to be taken, but, you know, maybe the first step would be indicating to, to your families, letting them know that, that, you know, as, as with everything that we've considered this evening, that there is support for moving forward with the proposal. Superintendent Trenell will have more information to be bringing back to the board. But we're also have a lot more areas that we need to consider around. You know, the whole host of issues that, that were brought up this evening, maybe the bigger picture. At this time, are there other comments, questions to be asked from the board? Or from staff? Not seeing any, Superintendent Trenell, anything to add before we close the meeting?
I just appreciate the opportunity tonight. When we were thinking about the potential of what the request was with the expansion or the reinstatement of the charter, I really felt like we couldn't do that without asking the board for a study session to look at all of the angles of this. And I very much appreciate everyone's perspective and bringing what you believe this means for our district and what we believe we're bringing forward as a potential opportunity, knowing that we have the work going on at CCLA and Elsie. And yes, this will all factor into that for certain. So I'm really grateful for your time. I know time is precious these days and appreciate those who've been in attendance with us tonight as well, as well as our panelists. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Before we do adjourn, Director Beard, anything to add from the student perspective? Not to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, it's fine. I went through Slater and Montgomery and I think that having another set of students come in through this, the system is going to be really helpful. There's not a lot of students at Montgomery that I know that are in Ivy French. It's mostly focused on Spanish a bit more. Actually, every Ivy student that I know is taking Ivy Spanish. So I think having more diversity in that area would be great. Also, more enrollment in Slater would be a fantastic idea. I'm in full support of the system going through Slater, because that's where I came from. And I'd love to see it grow in that, in that way, too.
Thank you, Director Beard. All right, seeing no more hands raised, looking at the clock, 6:45? All right, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you very much.